Okay, I will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, December 16th, 2024. I had asked that you all please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight at this meeting, we basically are commencing the start of the Christmas week, and we are ever thankful for the many blessings and wholehearted acts of kindness that we are seeing in Batavia on a day-to-day basis. Yesterday, we had a fabulous turnout and tremendous community support for the access toy drive led by the Bailey family over on the west side. And tonight, we had the Batavia United Way putting together its community donations, which will be distributed to needy families later in the week. And I'm especially pleased with the United Way and the variety of institutions that have joined them in this. Tonight, it was notable, they're meeting at the VFW to organize their whole moment, and there was a great turnout from the Batavia School Systems, which really showed a strong support of the community and two of the big governments coming together to support it. So I'm very, very pleased with all the heartfelt communications and Christmas ideas that we are showing in Batavia right now, and it shows that we really are a very special place on the face of the earth that we all should be most thankful for. Tonight, we also want to ask for a special blessing on those from our community and those serving from throughout our country on the foreign soils and defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered on each and every one of these men and women. Tonight at the council, we ask for opinions and direction and ideas by the members of the city council as they go about voting on the items before them, knowing that each and every one is here to do what in their own minds is in the very best interests of our community. And finally, we just ask for a blessing on all those in our community who are suffering to ill health or other dismay, and we just ask for blessings on all those in our community who may need the lift of support to get them through some difficult times. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Who wants to do Pledge of Allegiance? I have a volunteer. Alderman.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Barazza?
Here.
Lancy?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Peiper?
Here.
Malone?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Malay?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Serone? Vocal singer? Twelve present, two absent.
So we have the necessary quorum dictum deck business. Item four is a reminder from the desk that we ask you all to, if you're going to speak from the podium, that you please speak into the microphone because the meeting is being recorded on BATV, and if you don't talk into that microphone, all those listening and watching on TV will not be able to hear you. Moving then to item number five, items to be removed, editor changed on tonight's agenda. Do we have anything? I don't think so. Okay. Item six, which is presentation of the tonight's consent agenda, and Alderman, Beckett, your moment. Thank you.
Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows: except in place on file, the September and October financial reports and the monthly billing report for November of 2024, and for approval, the December 6, 2024 payroll in the amount of $1,063,926.33, the accounts payable check register in the amount of $5,932,649.57, the city council minutes for November 18, 2024, and December 2, 2024, ordinance 2024-74 amending the municipal code relating to sanitary sewer usage rates, ordinance 2024-75 amending the municipal code relating to water usage rates, resolution 2024-153-R approving of task number 10 with ERA consultants for construction engineering services related to the Fox River stabilization project in an amount not to exceed $58,300, ordinance 2024-77 authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement between Mark F. and Susan A. Lekansik and the City of Batavia for the property located at 02 South 735 South Redant Road, ordinance 2024-78 authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement between Richard C. Saul and Holly L. Saul of the Saul Trust and the City of Batavia for property located at 02 South 799 South Redant Road, ordinance 2024-79 authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement between Thomas E. and Joanne C. Zilman and the City of Batavia for property located at 02 South 912 Wagner Road, ordinance 2024-80 authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement between Andrew and Tracy Brer and the City of Batavia for property located at 02 South 950 Wagner Road, ordinance 2024-82 amendments to the text of the zoning code, section 4.106, refuse recycling grease container and compacting equipment enclosures, resolution 2024-158-R, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement between the City of Batavia and the Illinois Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 224 patrol officers, resolution 2024-158-R, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement between the City of Batavia and the Illinois Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 224 patrol sergeants. Your Honor, I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Motion to second and afford for the approval of the items on the agenda. Do we have any discussion on any of them? Chair seeing none, the court call the roll.
Beck?
Aye.
Peiper?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Twelve yes, no, no, two absent.
Consent agenda is approved. Moving to item seven, matters from the public for items not on the agenda, and we have a presentation tonight on an update on the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation project, and Jerry Ruth is here. Want to come up, Jerry, and tell us the latest?
Am I sharing my screen with everybody yet?
You're okay now.
Okay. That's convenient. Welcome, everybody, to the update for progress on the Phase IIa project, the wastewater treatment facility. We're placing a lot of concrete, we're putting up a lot of CMU block, so the headworks building, you'll see pictures of it, it's almost at its full height right now, they finished placing the block perimeter walls around on the second floor, they placed some equipment, the major equipment inside, some pumps, grit removal equipment, screening equipment. In the primary clarifier 404, the one they're furthest along in, they completed a hydrostatic test, they're gonna retest it in the spring, they had a couple leaks and they didn't want to keep the test going through the freezing weather that we had a couple weeks back, so they put a pause on it and they're gonna continue that in the spring. The other two primary clarifiers, they're progressing with more concrete and formwork. The primary clarifier control building and in the headworks were finishing the walls, so we're rubbing all the concrete, getting a nice smooth finish and making it appealing as you walk in, even though it is a wastewater plant. We're placing block at the primary clarifier control building as well, that's all the way up to full height, just shy, and they're delivering precast hollow core planks probably on Thursday this week. The UV building, we finished up the electrical, started up the equipment, and trained city staff on its use, so that building is now functioning, it's sort of like on a trial period right now, we're gonna keep the existing system and the new system running in series until it runs for enough period of time where I feel comfortable and Zach feels comfortable and city staff around him feels comfortable with taking off the old system. So offsite, not a ton, we talked last time about the bike path being open, yes, it's open, the contractor has put a fence all along the eastern side of that bike path just to prevent people from veering off the path inadvertently or not to get into their construction staging area and to keep them safe. This is the paved area right at the south end where the bike path meets up with the path that continues on down south along the west bank of the Fox River. In headworks, we're continuing to finish up the concrete surfaces, this is an excavation also alongside in between our new building and our existing building where we had to expose some utility lines and put a doorstool for a future doorway that's gonna be cut into that wall. I mentioned the hydrostatic test on the primary clarifiers, there's actually a picture from last month, I'll page right through it. This is the aerial from November 1st, and as you can see, the building has popped up relatively quickly, they took advantage of the warm weather that they had and completed this work in short order. Here's another view from the north, basically looking northwest, and you see the building starting to take shape. Clarifier work, it's down and dirty for a while, so you're not gonna see anything of substance for a while, but they dug a pit, they're placing the lower section called the center pier for the middle portion of clarifier 402, and they're continuing on with concrete work for clarifier 403. These are the walls of clarifier 404 and 403. This is the aerial from November 1st, and they tended the primary clarifier control building to get the temperature that they needed to place the blocks, that's why the tent is over that, but the next area, we'll see that building will be up a little beyond, and both clarifiers will be completed on the north side, and you'll probably see the slab going in for the third clarifier. There are four in total, so we're cramming a lot of equipment in that space. UV equipment installation, this is the big thing this month, had the manufacturer come out and do sort of a dry startup, and then they did the wet startup where they introduced water, tested the bulbs, tested the weir for its functionality, make sure everything was flowing correctly, and these are a couple of the views with the lights on, disinfecting flow before it enters the Fox River. That system was in operation from Thursday of last week. Terms of progress, just under $30 million with construction and engineering costs spent to date, I've been updating this group on the progress in terms of calendar days, I wanted to also just demonstrate that the contractor is about two-thirds spent through his work, so dollar-wise, definitely ahead of schedule, he won't say he's ahead of schedule, he'll say he's on schedule, but they're doing just fine, and the weather has helped, and they've taken advantage of it. No update on change orders, still riding around zero for change orders. I anticipate that I'll be bringing another one to this group in January. In terms of schedule, I'm not gonna say that the UV building is complete yet, there's still punch lists and all the other things that they need to do, but we're operational, which is the really key part, because the old UV system was failing, we're starting to see issues with it, and they weren't able to replace the parts anymore, so came in just in time, and the fact that we got it in a month early is really a credit to IHC as a contractor. All the other milestones, I anticipate I'll say something similar, because I think we're gonna be early on all of them. And that is your update. Any questions?
Questions? I would just make note that I think I'm admiring the quality of the work, number one, and the preparedness of keeping this thing somewhat on schedule, and I've, it's an odd thing I'd have to talk to people about, but I've had, I think, five other cities call me recently and want to know about this thing that we're doing in Batavia, because they're hearing very positive things about it, so I say nice things about Trotter in the meantime, but there's a lot of people watching this, because there's a number of cities around us that are gonna have to face many of these same changes as time goes on, and we seem to be kind of one of the leaders of the pack here, and so I'm appreciative of that and the good work you're doing and the amount of seemingly federal money that we seem to be getting to help us do this, that's probably the big trigger on the room, but we're not having to put a lot of this on the backs of the Batavia users, I shouldn't say ratepayers, because this isn't a property tax expense, it's coming off your bills that you're gonna get charged, but we're seemingly gonna be able to hold this in control, and so a lot of towns want to come in once we're done and gather all the ideas, so you may be busy as a consulting service and hopefully get you some more business, but there's a lot of people out there that are asking a lot of questions about what Batavia's doing and how well it seems to be going and where we're going from here, so thanks for your good efforts.
Absolutely, I appreciate it. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, have a nice Christmas.
Yeah, you too.
All right, next one is item number nine, and that's a presentation from Water Street Studios about a collection of Batavia art, and Bill McGrath is here to tell us about this story.
Thanks, Mayor.
Bottom bar.
I'm here tonight to help you solve a dilemma that I think you're all gonna have the day after Christmas, and that is, you're gonna be asking each other, how come we didn't get pieces of art for Christmas? Well, Joyce and Ed Duglupowski have been, were Batavia residents for over 40 years, about 1100, in the 1100 block of South Batavia Avenue. Ed passed away a year and a half ago, he was a student at the School of the Art Institute, then he was an art teacher for the rest of his life, actually, before retirement. Ed, especially at Glenbard West, he was there for many, many years. Ed was a fabulous artist, but his focus was on teaching. He entered a few local shows and won prizes, but he never got into the area where he was represented by galleries or anything like that, because his time was spent helping kids. When he passed, Joyce Duglupowski called Water Street Studios and some other people, because they had been benefactors of Art in Your Eye for several years, and she said, "I have all the art of Ed's that I want, and I want to get the rest of his art into people's hands." So she gave this collection of art to Water Street Studios to sell, and sell reasonably so that people could get it. Well, it's almost 400 pieces of art, and it is a huge project. We've gotten volunteers who catalogued every one of them by title, year done, size, whether they're framed or not framed, we have a database of every piece along with pictures. Batavia Enterprises was kind enough to give us a space after Bob Henson, let us have a space, a fun way for about five months where we could clean it and do all this, create the database. We have a space that used to be part of Batavia Animal Clinic, so it's right across First Street from BEI's actual offices, and on Friday night, Saturday and Sunday, January 10th, 11th, and 12th, we're gonna have what we're calling Ed's Studio and Gallery, and we're gonna have a sale there. And we may have other times when we pop it up, but we just encourage the community to come because we had a professional artist, a friend of Ed's come in and price this art, and with the idea that it could get into people's hands, so there are pieces of art for a dollar, $5, $10, you name it, on up to $3,000, $4,000, and $5,000, some huge, just excellent paintings. As you can see from the slideshow, he was just excellent, and since he was painting so long, there's all different styles from all the different decades that he painted in, and we just wanted to let the community know this, and if anybody is in search of some quality art, it will be a lot of fun, because there's so much to look at. So that's January 10th, 11th, and 12th. I don't know if anybody has any questions? Lehman?
It popped up briefly, the link, it was like waterstreetstudio.org/edsgallery, do you know that off the top of your head?
It's a slash events, it's slash events, org slash events.
Okay.
Is there a link off of the Water Street page, so it's easy to find that one? Yes, it's off the Water Street page, and we have a big screen TV in the gallery right now that has supposedly a 24/7 slideshow with a QR code, I think our Water Street Studios will have a QR code that leads to the entire, pretty much the entire database, so there's sketches, I think that we'll probably have some art left over, frankly, and I think we'll be bringing that to the grammar schools and just saying, hand it out to kids, you know, so they can have some art, so, anyway, that's it, thanks so much, Merry Christmas.
Thank you, look forward to that event, I'm thinking we will have quite a few people coming in, probably even from the outer town to see this, I would think.
Yeah, I think there's some people from the city, especially people who are knowledgeable from him being at the Art Institute School and other folks.
You came down and shared this with the council, so we all know kind of what it's all about, where it came from, and the good things it may do for your studio as far as what we're going to do here, so, appreciate it.
Not to get into glad handing, but you're a partner, you guys have been very supportive of us, and so we want to share what we're doing and let you know that we're not sitting on our laurels either, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
All right, moving then is item 10, Main Street's presentation, and we have the executive director and president here, so.
So thank you for having me today. So first of all, keep shopping local, I mean, that's the most important thing this holiday season, just keeping reminding people, it's really important to support our local businesses, and it's what makes our downtown vital, so we created a downtown gift guide this year, like we did last year, and we shared it in additional publications, Neighborhood Tourist Magazine, which is a Shaw publication, that went out, as well as the Shaw Hometown Happenings and their Holiday Gift Guide, and a targeted e-blast, so we're just trying to get that out in as many ways as possible. The first couple weeks, we've seen over 1,200 views of that gift guide, so, yeah, it's really nice, if you haven't seen it, it features a lot of gifts in a lot of different categories, so check that out. This weekend is the last weekend at the Boardwalk Shop, so if you haven't seen Santa or Mrs. Claus, it's an opportunity to go down and see them for free, they'll be there on Sunday from noon to 2:00, and then a little bit of an update on the Boardwalk Shops, the current shops, let's see, and what they're doing. Seapiece Style, I think I might have mentioned this, is joining the Wilson Street Mercantile in early 2025, the Neighbor's Grid Shop has opened a spot in Geneva on Third Street, Big Bear Glasses has joined the McHenry River Walk Shops, which is a program very similar to the Boardwalk Shops, and then I just heard today that Morbid Momentos will be opening a shop in Elgin this March, so, you know, just continue to support all of these businesses, and the Boardwalk Shops continues to be a thriving program. Our applications are currently open for the 2025 season, and we will be during those in January, and then as well as the Boardwalk Shops will be accepting applications for the 2025 season for the farmers market and the artisan collective in January, that will start accepting those applications. And then finally, the last thing I wanted to mention is, we created a new position with the additional funds that we got, it's called the Community Promotions Coordinator, that person will be responsible for content creation, digital content creation, as well as graphic design work, and they will be the lead on Block Party and Bat Fest, so we put that application out, and we had six really good candidates, and we'll be announcing soon who we selected. And then next month, we'll just give you the year in review, and that's all I have for today. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions of our director, Main Street? I just want to say that I truly believe Batavia Main Street is doing a phenomenally good job on behalf of the community, and you really set us up into the sky as far as people looking at what's going on here. And as I said earlier, I'm getting calls from other mayors now wanting to know, what's the secret in Batavia that we got all this great business and it's coming here, and I've had several call me and wanted me to take them for a walk in downtown Batavia and explain to them how all these, I said, "Well, I'm probably not the one to talk to about individual businesses," but they seem very impressed with what we're doing. I know, I believe Algonquin is now in business with one up in Algonquin, are you aware of that?
Boardwalk Shop?
Yeah.
Is that a Boardwalk Shop? I haven't heard about that one.
No, they're down here asking a lot of questions.
Yeah, we get emails regularly from across the country about people asking about the program, so.
So we're doing something right here, and it just makes me very proud of Batavia that we're getting all this positive attention, and people are in here trying to borrow, I'll use that word, our good ideas.
Yeah, absolutely.
And how to do it, and how to present it, and what the results have been, and so we got good stuff happening here, and you're kind of putting us on the map in a very positive spin, so I really appreciate the good efforts that the Main Street Board and its executive staff is doing to bring this to fruition and reality in Batavia.
Well, thank you. All right, bye. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. All right, moving to item number 11, which is resolution 2024-152-R authorizing the city staff to execute an MSA and an SOW with Centel Solutions for the 2024 City of Batavia Surveillance System upgrade. Who's got this one?
Your Honor.
Yes, this is adding, I believe it's 55 cameras to our system, so that we'll have eyes on everything from downtown area to all of our utility assets and everything else that we wanted to put in on this upgrade. And there's both the MSA and then the actual agreement with them to provide the camera system and all the maintenance on that. Anybody have any questions? Now I'll make the motion that we approve resolution.
One thing that was pointed out to me recently, a concern by a resident, was at the fire stations, there is an emergency baby drop-off for mothers who, you know, for whatever reason, aren't able to take care of a child due to extreme, you know, extreme circumstances, and the resident in question raised this thought that having cameras on that location might dissuade somebody from using that service, just adding it as a potential concern.
Yeah, that's something that we could either block out that area so it's not covered, and I think it is also protected by statute, so that would be something that we would deal with.
Okay.
As, one thing we'll do kind of after this is approved, is we'll go and have real detailed design review with the company, and so that's where we'll be like, "All right, you can't cover this three-foot area," or something like that, and that way we can ensure that that would not be covered by the cameras.
Okay, fantastic, thank you.
Other question, Alderman?
I just raise my objections again to all those extra cameras around some of these locations, I just don't think it's necessary, I think it's kind of an overreach and a waste of money in some circumstances. I get where some of them are, I understand where people are coming from, but I'm just not a big fan of this in general, so I'll be voting no because of that.
Comment, your questions? Alderman Lehman?
I wasn't at the meeting last week, but I did watch it after, and I just wanted to say, I did appreciate some of the questions that, Alderman, you brought up, and some of his concerns, specifically, the who and why are accessing the surveillance videos, and I think that was very valid, and I hope to see that in the final contracts or whatever we have, we put, because I would hope that that's not just accessed by whoever wants to be accessing the videos, and just multiple other things you brought up were very, very valid. I do know that most private entities have cameras on their buildings for security reasons, and so I do think it's a fair measure that, as a public entity, we protect some of our assets, so I will be voting in support of this, but I do hope that now and in the future, we have some very strong we have some very strong language on how they're being used.
And I think, you know, one of the things to remember is that anybody that has the authority to access that would also have records of when that was accessed, who accessed it, and, you know, that we would have the oversight on that to say why if we feel like there's a problem. So I think that's something that we have to remember, that that's one of our jobs, is to make sure that that access is restricted and also monitored. So that way, we really do know who's there and who's looking at it.
Actually, that brings up another question. Who is going to be reviewing that?
The chief of police.
And that will be reported to council annually?
Yeah, I think that's in the policy. There's a report that's issued regarding everything we're talking about.
Yeah, just one more follow-up on the why portion of it. We do this from an IT aspect with privileged access accounts that, for me to log into a system, I have to unlock that account, give a reason is exactly why I'm doing it. And if there's a, if there's an incident that I'm following up on, I put that incident number, so it's all tracked so that there's a reason. And then when we're audited, then they can say, well, why did you take this action? Well, I took this action because of this case, and this is why it happened. So that's why that, to me, is so important. Because somebody's going to FOIA us at some point saying, I want to see when these cameras are accessed and why.
Your comments? Alderman Lancy?
Yeah, I was just gonna, you know, due to my professional career, I'm gonna recuse myself from this vote, but I am here to answer any questions. You know, know this space very well. You know, to some of your guys' concerns, obviously, those are normal concerns. And thankfully, Sciantel being who they are, the systems they're using, these are all enterprise-grade systems that are, you know, cyber secure and all that, so, but.
Just have a question on who can access the footage from a different perspective. Is the public ever able to access this footage if they were to use a FOIA request or something? Could they get the videos?
Yes, all these records are subject to FOIA.
Yeah, okay. And, you know, one thing we might consider that I understand there's sort of safety and privacy concerns. This is also a service. You know, if something were to happen on a public street, the public may want to see that, and it may serve them. And so I, you know, I'll be voting yes, but I think we need to balance both the, we don't want to be so restrictive that the service is no longer provided, whereas on the flip side, we don't want to be so permissive in that we're kind of letting anybody willy-nilly kind of get to it. So it, you know, it's a two-way street there.
Any else?
I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 2024-152-R, authorizing city staff to execute an MSA and SOW with Sciantel Solutions for the 2024 City of Batavia Surveillance System Upgrades.
Second.
A motion by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Solfa, for the approval of Resolution 2024-152-R. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Solfa?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
No.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
I'll recuse myself.
Epstein?
Epstein, there you go.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
10 yes, 1 no, 1 abstention, 2 absent.
Motion's approved.
All right. Moving then to item number 12, is Resolution 2024-151-R, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Batavia Park District for blanket easements for surveillance cameras.
This is an extension, basically, of what we just approved for the surveillance system due to the location of multiple cameras that would actually be on park district property. We have to have an intergovernmental agreement with them to allow that. And that's what this agreement would be for.
Questions on that?
I don't make the motion that we approve Resolution 2024-151-R, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with Batavia Park District for blanket easements for surveillance cameras.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Solfa, for the approval of Resolution 2024-151-R for the intergovernmental agreement with the Batavia Park District for blanket easements for surveillance cameras. Any further discussion?
Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Solfa?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
No.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Same.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper? Malone?
Aye.
10 yes, 1 no, 1 abstention, 2 absent.
Resolution 2024-151-R is approved. Moving then to item 13, approval to waive formal bidding for city entrance signs. Who's got this one?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Beck, was it? For the approval waiving bidding for the city entrance signs. Any discussion on that one?
I have a quick explanation. We had a contract with another company. That contract kind of fell through because they didn't actually want to provide what we asked for. So now we're going back to the company that did the original signs that we have. And because it's midway through that process, we have to waive formal bidding to go back with the other contractor.
I would just say I've had several compliments from people from outside of town that say, what nice signs you got coming into town. So I haven't had anybody tell me they're ugly, but I've certainly had several tell me they really jazz up Batavia's look at the city limits. Any other discussion?
We have a motion in a second?
Yep. Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Solfa?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
12 yes, no, no, 2 absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving then to item 14, which is Resolution 2024-154-R, approving a contract with Aurora Sign Company for the city entrance signs.
Alderman Wolf?
This would be the actual contract with Aurora Sign Company for the signs. And are they going to get completed this year? Do we know? Or is it going to be into next spring to get them done?
By, the deadline for one of our easements is end of March. So we are shooting for the end of March. They have all three of them finished.
Okay. And with that, is there any other questions? Now I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 2024-154-R, approving contract with Aurora Sign Company for the city entrance signs.
Second.
Motion in a second? Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Solfa?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
12 yes, no, no, 2 absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving to 15, which is Ordinance 2024-081, conditional use for video gaming establishment in the DMU Downtown Mixed Use District at 140 West Wilson Street. Who's got this one? Alderman?
Your Honor. This would be for East China Inn for video gaming establishment downtown. And we discussed this pretty thoroughly at the committee of the whole meeting. And it's here, if there's any questions, any more questions about it? Now I'll make the motion that we approve Ordinance 2024-081, conditional use for video gaming establishment downtown mixed-use district at 140 West Wilson Street.
Motion by Wolf, second by Solfa, for the approval of Ordinance 2024-081 for the video gaming establishment in the DMU Downtown Mixed Use District at 140 West Wilson Street. Any discussion?
Alderman Er.
Yeah, just to clear something up, I tend to see stuff, people saying that this is a personal vendetta against gaming, and it's not. I've said before, I gamble. And so it's not about that, but it is. There's plenty of scientific evidence out there and research studies that show that this preys people with lower incomes. And it's, the games are designed to get people to keep putting money in and in and in and in. And Batavians are losing $250,000 a month on these machines. So, yes, somebody's getting that. Half of it's going to the business, and half of it's, or half of it's going to the retailer, and half of it's going to the owner of the machines, some to the city, but not much. You know, like $13,000 a month is our income from it as a city. So, again, this is not a personal thing against these. This is not an anti-business thing. This is a pro-citizen thing. And that's why we'll vote no and continue to vote no on these.
Malley?
Yes, I also will be voting no on this. As I've stated many times before, it's about the fact that I don't want that image for Batavia. And it's, as we've continued to have this discussion, it continues to grow. And so we're moving more and more towards that. And so I will be voting no.
Any else?
I would just note that the applicant in this is probably one of the stronger and more friendlier businesses we got in the downtown area. I've never had any problems with them. They're very straightforward operating people. And I, again, and other people who visit Batavia or go to their restaurant, I get rave reviews about it. So it's not like we're awarding this to some negative institution. This is somebody that has done good for Batavia, and I look forward to them continuing to do good business.
Alderman Barron?
I just have a question, probably for Roman. If the applicant met, meets every criteria of the ordinance, could we potentially be putting ourselves at risk if we deny this license?
A good question. I don't know the answer off the top of my head. I have to look at the city code in terms of the actual requirements. Of course, so to whenever you deny somebody, a business owner or property owner some right, there always is the potentiality of creating some sort of liability or some sort of claim against the city for denying them that right. But I don't know the exact, specific answer to your question because I have not looked at that in depth. But would you move my general comments that whenever you deny something, you are potentially opening yourself up to some claim at least?
Thank you. Yeah, just because of that, for me, this is a tool for the business. It is their decision to be able to decide what they want to do to try and make their business thrive. She came in and was like, I don't know if this is going to work. But again, this is a tool that we've provided business owners to allow them to stay in our community. If you do look at the numbers, if you spend the time, our biggest, our two biggest are not even in the downtown area. And we have to remember that we serve the entire city, not just a downtown area. And our two biggest places where people have made the choice to put the money in the machines are on the outskirts of our community.
Any else? Alderman Lehman?
Thank you. So I think this is a great example of how all of our differing views of what our vision is for downtown Batavia kind of show it themselves. And Mayor, I completely agree with you. Like, we very much value your business, and you've been around for a long time. And so my vote has nothing to do with a specific business, but more, I've always expressed that this was not my vision for downtown historic Batavia, to have multiple video gambling machines in our historic buildings and our historic downtown area. I think there's a place for it. I think there's a place for gambling. I think, but that's just not my vision for our downtown. And there's already at least 10 units in that, that block. And I think that's, I've said multiple times in this room, I do not support expansion of video gaming in our downtown area. So I'll be voting no.
Any else? Alderman Lancy?
Yeah, I, yeah, I just hope this passes because I think this would be a travesty to a 30-year business here in Batavia. Let's, let's not forget that. I don't know how many of those we have. We have a few. We have, you know, decent amount. But, you know, that is, somebody who's put a lot of dedication into our town and has not needed these until now. We all know, you know, the times have been tough. People are probably going out less. This is a way for them to get bodies in their establishment, you know, and buy some higher-margin stuff while they're in there, whether it's, you know, alcohol, whatever it might be. But, you know, to die on this hill for a, with a 30-year business here would just kill me. I think that would be a travesty. I don't think it should happen. I think, sure, we can have a conversation, but, you know, to cut it off when we have a business owner coming to us basically pleading for help, you know, those, that's tough. So just think about that long and hard. If this business does not survive, I'm not going to say it's because we didn't give them gaming, but they could have had a fighting chance. This is a way for them to do it. There's other businesses in this town that have not put in half the effort, you know, to stay here for 30 years, to run any business for 30 years is, is a testament. So, you know, congratulations on, on doing that. And I hope we can, you know, continue to help you thrive here in Batavia. So my vote will be, will be yes.
Any else?
Any else? Aldman, Moa.
Yeah, I, I think Tim brings up some great points about, you know, this establishment in particular, you know, absolutely a great establishment, love your food, the Mongolian beef, get it, it's delicious all the time. And, you know, they, they followed the rules, they did what they were supposed to do, they crossed their Ts, they dotted their Is, and they came to us. And for this particular vote, you know, I feel for those reasons, a yes vote is warranted. That said, you know, hearing Mr. Suckel share that a no could expose us to liability reinforces my belief that we need to empower ourselves, as the state legislature intended the local government to do, to be able to say no. If we can't say no, then this is a, an exercise in futility. We absolutely must write ordinances that allow us to say no, and we need to be intentional about that. And I think we need to seriously consider limits, again, as the legislature intended, right? They gave the power to the municipalities to decide if there was gonna be gaming and how much. And so I, I'm just reiterating that, you know, don't, I intend on bringing this up again today, I'll vote yes, but in the future, I do hope to start exploring options for limiting video gambling.
Aldman, Sulfah.
You are absolutely allowed to vote no if they don't meet the qualifications, that's what the ordinance is for. So if they don't meet the qualifications, vote no.
Anybody else? Aldman, Lehman.
Since we have legal here tonight, can you just explain what conditional use means?
Conditional use just means that it's a use that is not automatically granted, but you can grant that use within that zoning area with certain conditions attached to it, they breach the conditional, conditions, and you can revoke that right to use, have that use or that license.
Vocal singer.
Is there other assistance that we can provide this business with that, have any options been explored to help in any way? I was not here last week either, so I don't know if this question, I did watch some of the meeting, but is there other help that we can provide other than this? Or?
Laura.
We haven't had any other requests for assistance outside of this.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions or discussion? Court call the roll then? We made a motion, correct?
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
No.
Malay.
No.
Uwer.
No.
Vocal singer. Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
No.
Peeper.
No.
Malone.
Yes.
Six yes, six no, two absent.
I will vote yes. Moving into item sixteen, which is resolution twenty twenty-four dash one five five R, authorizing, authorization for Illinois Emergency Management Mutual Aid System Agreement. Who's got this one?
I can take it, your honor. This would be for our mutual aid system agreement that we have, basically revised through Illinois State. And this is something that we do, you know, participate in on a yearly basis and constantly, you know, we will go and cover another station's manpower situation, they'll come into our community to do the same for us. And it's something that I think works out really well. And this just codifies that on a legal level. So that way, we cover all the bases we need to when, when we're in another city or when somebody else comes into our city.
I mean, I think a good example of this was up in Rockton, Illinois, north of Rockford about forty years ago, they had a factory explosion and it went on for seven or eight days. And before it was over with, they needed assistance, I believe it was, from forty-three other fire departments in the region. In fact, Batavia went up there with our tower ladder and filled in their station with some other departments for a twelve-hour period on a couple of occasions. Without this agreement, that would have been a difficult legally thing to assign, but this gives all of us immediate, some, God forbid, some terrible thing happened in town, we could get fifty departments in here and we'd have the agreement in place to let them work. So this is just a very workable thing, situation.
Something that, you know, we benefited from it and we've, you know, definitely gone to other communities quite a bit over the years. So, something that I think we need to have and something that they shouldn't have to worry about when they either come into our town or we go somewhere else.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-four one fifty-five R, authorization for Illinois Emergency Management Mutual Aid System Agreement.
Second. Move by Wolf, second by Sulfah, for the approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash one five five for the Illinois Emergency Management Mutual Aid System Agreement. Court call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uwer.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
Twelve yes, no, no, two absent.
Motion's approved. Move to seventeen, which is resolution twenty twenty-four dash one five six, authorization to approve restated TRICOM intergovernmental agreement. All right.
Moved. And this is something that I, I think, you know, we all talk about it, you know, on a pretty regular basis, you know, TRICOM is the dispatch system for Batavia, Geneva, and St. Charles. Again, it's one of those things that we do very well together. Doesn't matter where the border is and doesn't matter what color the, the uniforms are, we all work together whenever we have to, and this is one of those things that saves each community money, you know, on top of it. Plus, it's a very well-instituted situation. I mean, this is something that has been around, I think, for forty, forty years maybe. And, you know, it's something that has been constantly upgraded as far as technology and, you know, serves its purpose each and every day. Every time you hear, you know, a siren or you see a, a vehicle going somewhere, they got dispatched by TRICOM. So, very important thing.
Yeah, as the, you're representative on the TRICOM Central Dispatch Board, the board's been working on this from before I was on the, on the board, it's a, a long work in progress. But just so you know, the first intergovernment agreement was nineteen seventy-six, so we're coming up on fifty years. It's been amended six times and with new technology and stuff, there was, the, the board felt that it's time to reinstate the whole agreement rather than a hodgepodge of amendments to it. So, it's really a process to clean up and it, you know, with, with new technologies and best practices increasing the nine-one-one emergency services, it's due for, for that. And the committee voted unanimously, just so you know, the committee's made up of the fire chief, the fire, police chief, and an alderman from the three legacy towns, Batavia, Geneva, and St. Charles. And with other members that are not legacy members being South Elgin, Sugar Grove. Help me out. Several.
Sugar Grove, North Aurora.
North Aurora, yes, thank you. So, and, yeah, it's, it's time for this to be, to be reinstated and it's, it makes sense at this time, so.
I would just say, as one, most of you know, I have, this is kind of a hobby, I listen to this all day long. And I can tell you countless times I've heard where this has come into play, where we're short a truck or a squad car or something and Geneva's right here or whoever else needs to come, everybody knows what everybody else is doing. And it keeps us all in tune. And I think we've solved a lot of crime and kept a lot of things out from going, getting out of hand, or houses setting on fire and we get them out and quick. There's a lot of different situations where this thing has really played very positive for us, so I encourage us all to support this one.
I would just add to that, Geneva Council has passed it, and St. Charles, the committee passed it and it will be going to their board. And the attorneys from all three cities have been part of the process and have all agreed with this, so it's been well-budded.
Make a motion.
I made the motion, I don't know if anybody's seconded it yet.
Motion by Wolf, second by Malay, for the approval of the inner authorization to approve the restated TRICOM intergovernmental agreement. Court call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uwer.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
Twelve yes, no, no, two absent.
Motion's approved. Chief Hanson just came up and whispered in my ear, and I, I did know this, one of the people, persons who was very active in setting this all up in nineteen seventy-six was the Geneva Fire Chief at the time by the name of Frank Johnson. And he was there for a number of years, retired, and then he moved out to Sycamore, where he's lived for the last number of years. And unfortunately, I have to report that he passed away this morning, so he just was in his older years, but he was one of the creative sources that put this idea on the table and helped put it over and get it all going. And this really has been a very positive thing we've done, and I just wanted to pay a moment of tribute to Frank Johnson for being one of the leaders and putting this whole thing on the table and all the good that's come from it. So, just make note in the record that we remembered him and his good efforts. All right, moving then to item eighteen, administrator's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to add to the words of praise for TRICOM Central Dispatch. And those individuals are really some unsung heroes, the very first person you're talking to when you are in need of emergency service, and they never know what they're gonna face when they pick up those lines and have to make critical decisions that affect people's lives. So, I just, I can't say enough about those individuals and everybody that's part of that organization, they're excellent and we are so lucky to have them. So, thank you very much for that approval. Some things that are going on here at the city, Lori Botterman, our communications manager, has been working on replacing the current chatbot that the city has. It's okay, but I think that the one that we are going to get is gonna be really excellent. It's going to have so much more data that it is calling upon to answer questions for the general public, including our entire city code, including all of the documents that we have put in Laserfish, which if you look on the city's website and you use that government tab at the top, one really important area for everyone, the general public, is transparency. Transparency is where the city has amassed a group of documents that we think it's important for the public to have very easy access to, whether that has to be our, our collective bargaining agreements or ordinances, resolutions that we've passed minutes from meetings. This chatbot is gonna have all of that at its disposal. So you should be able to ask, you know, when did the city council discuss this particular topic? And this chatbot should be able to provide you with that information. So we're really excited to add that type of functionality to our website, and hopefully that will be a big help to the general public when they're looking for information on our website. Also, excited, if you've driven down Van Norwick, you can see the first single, single-family home has been going up pretty quick there. I'm amazed at the progress that they make on a daily basis, and that is gonna be the model home for the single-family homes over there. And shortly, we expect that we'll be issuing the building permit for the model for the townhomes as well. And the Historic Preservation Commission held their second meeting on the certificate of appropriateness for that tin shop building that's at one oh six North River Street. And so they have approved, that can be demolished in the future, but you're going to see us put out word to the community. You know, some people just love the look of that building and we hope that someone in the community might be interested in either moving it or at least utilizing parts of it. There's a pretty cool mural that is on the north side of that building. Scott, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, the, before it can be approved for any type of demolition, it has to go to city council.
Yes.
For approval of the COA, so that'll be coming in January.
Thank you. And then also, the Plan Commission is going to meet on Wednesday for a public hearing on a conditional use for a cannabis dispensary called Duchess Cannabis, which is, would be located at one forty-four South Randall Road, that's the old Arby's location. And this will be our first cannabis dispensary application, and we have a second application that is currently pending. A staff review letter has been provided to that organization, but we're awaiting some additional information and comments before that will move forward through the approval process. In Public Works, the Fox River Stabilization is going to be starting behind Sturdy Shelter. That area will be closed until March of twenty twenty-five, when that project is complete. In the Fire Department, they have completed in-service training on the new Sutphen Fire Engine that we received. In Police, I would like to congratulate Officer Zach Lamb, he has graduated from Suburban Law Enforcement Academy on Friday, December thirteenth, and he'll return to the department and complete sixteen weeks now of intensive field training. On December eleventh, Chief Mazin, Chief Blowers attended the thirty-year anniversary celebration for the Suburban Law Enforcement Academy, SLEA. Chief Blowers has also been installed as a member on the SLEA board, and BPD, BPD is committed to SLEA and their plans to continue to utilize their academy, which is rated the top in the state of Illinois. That's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Any questions, Laura?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have other business from the council? We get out of here early tonight. Under the mayor's report, I just want to share an experience that we had in town yesterday on Sunday, the Batavia Toy Drive had its first distribution over at the now city-owned building that's going to become the Coast Tree and the Food Pantry on First Street. And the Batavia Police Department rose to the occasion because we had, I believe it was over five hundred applicants of people who had asked for toys, and the Bailey family had been working diligently to get all these into big bags. And I mean, these weren't small bags, these were big bags. And I'm going to put on the city website here probably tomorrow, some pictures I took because these bags, some of them were probably as big as the tables were sitting at. And they were heavy. And who rose to the occasion to move all those bags from the floor of the building to the cars of the folks? But none other than the Batavia High School Football Team. And they really, some of them, two or three guys had to carry the bag, but they got them all in there and they were very pleased and proud to be part of this and part of the community. So I think there was a lot of lessons learned there and I was very proud to see it. The other one that really rose to the occasion was the Batavia Police Department. And Deputy Chief Johnson had put out a handout that they walked up and down First Street the day before this all took place and left it hanging on everybody's doorknob that there's gonna be this big traffic thing here tomorrow. And Sunday about one o'clock, there was a line of cars that went from the front of the building, which is almost there at Van Norrick, all the way down First Street to where it curves and turns and goes into Pitts Lane, there was cars backed up there waiting for their turn to pull in and get their bag of toys. And it all went so smoothly that I had one of the neighbors tell me that, that he had somebody coming to his house and all he had to do was call the police and they went out and asked the people that were sitting there to move up and they saved a space so that the visitors could get into the, so, I mean, we're going the extra mile here to really make people somewhat pleased with the services they're getting from the community of Batavia. So, I just would like to end the year by saying how fortunate I believe we are as a community to see all these good activities taking place, all these supports of needy causes. And I was to another one tonight down at the VFW where they were putting together food packages that they're gonna share with people in the next couple of days. And so there's just a lot of really nice things happening and it's all being done by, nobody's being paid, it's all being donated with donated stuff. And I think we're kind of a model of how to live in a good town where good things happen. And that's what really makes me proud to be the mayor of this town is, is that we're here doing stuff that really does have a meaning and a support, and specifically young children are benefactor, benefactors of this, when maybe they don't have support within their own home, that we find out who they are. And tonight, the Batavia School District was at the celebration down at the VFW, including the superintendent himself, helping to put together the packages that are gonna be distributed to the Batavia families. So, there's a lot of hands on deck here, and I think it speaks well to the quality of life that we enjoy in Batavia. And I think to large degree that a lot of that belongs, the credit to that belongs to you fourteen of you who are here running the city council, because you're creating a city that has the opportunities to do these kindness and acts of support within them. And that probably goes beyond what you were originally elected to be here is just to vote on things, but this goes into supporting ourselves and our members of our community who are less fortunate than many of the rest of us. And we make this a very special place that people can live here and, you know, fifty years from now, there'll be some kids in this town now who will have very nice, special memories of the Christmas that turned out okay because the Batavia folks rose to the occasion and supported them in the ways that we do. So, I just want to end my little talk for this year on that sentiment, that how lucky we all are to live in a town like this where there are so many people and so many organizations that are willing to do it for just the need that it needs to be done. And there are a lot of other places around that have this spirit that we have in Batavia, and it's something that I think we should all be very thankful and appreciative that we got going here. So that being said, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment. Motion second, court take a voice, folks?